Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to this afternoon's Planning and Highways Committee meeting. I will hand over to Paul for housekeeping, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just a few brief housekeeping announcements. We're not expecting any fire drills or anything, but if the fire alarm does sound, please just take instruction from staff and stewards. The assembly point would be Tudor Square if we needed to evacuate the building. Please can I remind everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? Today's meeting will be webcast, and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. While the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission, for example, if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information or in the event that a member of the public participating in the meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. I'll now ask the members to introduce themselves. Starting Bernard, please.
Councillor Bernard Little, Green councillor from Walkley.
Peter Price, Member for Shea Green, Brightside.
Tony, only Member from Osborne.
Laura Moynihan, Labour councillor for Manor Castle.
Good afternoon, Chair. Ibrahimullah, councillor for Netherregent Sharo.
Good afternoon, all. Councillor Galwayderall from Shea Green and Brightside Ward.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mike Chaplin, councillor for Southie Ward and Joint Chair of this committee.
Good afternoon. Glynnis Chapman, councillor for Mosborough Ward.
Good afternoon. Roger Davison, who is councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
Good afternoon. Barbara Masters, councillor for Ecclesall Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Richard Williams, Member for Stanington Ward and substitute for councillor Woodcraft.
Thank you, Alan. And I'm Alan Woodcock, councillor for East Ecclesfield and today's Chair. Thank you. Do we have any apologies, Paul?
We do, Chair, although councillor Williams has just kind of preempted this. So councillor Williams is attending in place of councillor Cliff Woodcraft. We've not received any other apologies.
Thank you, Paul. We have no exclusive public press. Any members' declarations of interest? Mike?
Chair, I've received an email from Emma Harland in relation to item eight two on the agenda.
Thank you, Mike. Can we go through the minutes of the previous meeting? Starting page nine. Ten. Eleven. Twelve. Have a proposed, please. Mike? Six. Site visits, item six, site visits. They'll be sent out to the members' calendars. Thank you. Item seven is pre-preservation order number four, six, nine, forty-five Door Road, Sheffield. And I'll hand that over to Vanessa. Vanessa.
Thank you. I'm seeking confirmation of TPO four, six, nine, which is at forty-five Door Road, S seventeen three N A. TPO was made on the sixteenth of February twenty twenty-three to protect two beech trees which stand in the curtilage of forty-five Door Road. And you can find, I think, the TPO and accompanying map in Appendix A. Either that or it's a late submission, but there should be a copy of the TPO in the document. The council received a request to protect the trees, both within Cavendish Avenue and Door Road, on the tenth of January twenty twenty-three. And the gardens of these properties stand back to back, and the trees on the rear boundaries form a green screen between the properties. The request was submitted in response to the granting appeal of consent for erection of three dwellings in the garden of forty-five Door Road. And residents were concerned about the treatment of trees on site, and they wanted trees preserving to ensure the continued existence of that green screen, which kind of hid the development from their gardens. I inspected the trees in question on the first of February. I found that the trees in Cavendish Avenue were deemed as... They were nice trees, they're not overly publicly visible, but really, they weren't deemed as being at threat in that they were all under good arboretural management. And so it wasn't deemed as expedient in the interests of amenity to make those trees subject to a TPO. If the trees in the rear of forty-five Door Road none were of sufficient quality to justify TPO, this in part being due to historic pruning, which was quite insensitive, but also due to the treatment of trees during the construction phase of the buildings. So the trees had all been damaged in some way or another, which meant that they wouldn't be suitable for protection. The two trees that were suitable were the two beech trees in question, which stand in the front garden of the property, and they stand adjacent to the highway. They're early mature specimens, they're very publicly visible, and they're in reasonable condition. I gave them an estimated retention span of around twenty years. You should be able to see pictures of the trees at Appendix C. Given the treatment of other trees on site, it was estimated that there was a foreseeable risk of similar treatment occurring to these trees, such that it was deemed expedient in the interests of amenity to make them subject to TPO. We didn't receive any objections to the TPO, and my recommendation would be that the TPO be confirmed if you see fit. Thank you.
Thanks, Vanessa. Any questions from members? Any comments from members? Mike?
Thank you, Chair. Happy to support the recommendation. I fear Vanessa's indication that the tree would have a lifespan of twenty years is probably right. These trees do seem to have more shallow tree roots than others, and I've been in woodlands before now where quite a lot of beech trees have come down. It's very sad to see, but high winds do seem to make these trees more vulnerable to natural felling. Thank you, Chair.
Thanks, Mike. Any further comments? We'll go to a vote. Bernard?
Can I just make a quick point? Sorry, before... Just want to make a little distinction between retention span and lifespan. I agree with everything you say in the lifespan of beech trees is sometimes curtailed by them toppling over. But the retention span refers to how long we think these trees can survive in the situation that they're currently in. So it's slightly different from the lifespan of a tree that's growing in perfect surroundings. And in this case, the retention span is less so because of the quite hostile environments that the tree is in, it being next to the road. But yeah, I just wanted to make that point.
Thanks, Vanessa. Oh, please. Bernard?
Yes, I support the confirmation of this TPO. Very glad to do so.
Support recommendation.
Tony?
Support recommendation, Chair.
Laura? Yeah?
Support, sir.
Gary?
Supported, Chair.
Mike?
Support the recommendation.
What is?
Support the recommendation.
Roger?
Let's support the recommendation.
Laura?
Support the recommendation.
Richard?
Yes, support the recommendation.
That recommendation is passed, thank you. We now move on to item eight, applications under various acts and regulations. We only now have one application to hear today. Item eight A, planning application number twenty-three, zero, zero, three, nine, two, stroke full, forty-seven Willow Lane, has been deferred for further work by the officers. That will be heard with a new report at the next meeting. So we now move on to item eight B, planning application number twenty-two, zero, four, five, three, stroke F U L, six, O, five, Ecclesall Road, Sheffield, S eleven, eight, P, T, which is page fifty-one of the agenda. Over to you, Chris.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, if I could first of all just draw members' attention to the supplementary report, the only item on the supplementary report. It's just an amendment to condition twenty, which is an adjustment of the hours for collection and delivery, and also an additional condition relating to sound attenuation works relative to live music and amplified sound. There are additions that have been agreed with the applicant's agent, Chair. They don't obviously change the basis of the recommendation. So the application site is on the south side of Ecclesall Road at the bottom of Botanical Road and front goes on to Neil Road. It's the former Sunday School building associated with the church to the east, which remains in church use. The building is currently vacant, having last been used as a museum. And the application is for a food hall, street food facility with bar and sort of seating areas, flexible areas for meeting spaces, for businesses, et cetera, and workspaces with a mezzanine floor level being introduced and a single-storey rear extension. Members can note from this plan, on the right-hand eastern boundary between the two properties is a... You'll see reference in the report to a footpath link, and that's where that link is, between the church building and the application building. So just going through one or two images. The area is obviously has a very commercial front on to Ecclesall Road, residential on to Neil Road, where the scale is very much two-story traditional red brick terraced housing. This is an image of the front. It's the right-hand of the two sort of ecclesiastical-looking properties on the Ecclesall Road frontage. That's another view from a different angle. And then from the rear, this is a view from Neil Road, showing the scale of the properties in the surrounding area with the two-story dwelling to the left there and the church building to the right. So it's the smaller stone building which is the application site with the stone boundary wall and the gated access. This plan shows the site layout, including the position of the new extension, which is on the Neil Road frontage. You can see there with the kind of the hatched box effectively. And then to the right-hand side of that image, you see a shaded area with some diagonal green lines across it. That is a roof terrace, which is for external seating and for customers, which will also be available at ground floor on the frontage where that green diagonal line is as well. This shows the internal layout of the ground floor with various spaces for kitchens, wash facilities, communal stores, et cetera. And the new building at the bottom is available for a multitude of uses within the broad umbrella of the use that's been proposed. And then this shows, it's quite difficult to identify, but this shows the extent of the mezzanine, which is everything apart from the box, the rectangle with the kind of with the large X in the middle of it. So that's the extent of the mezzanine floor. And then this drawing shows the scale of the extension, which is the hatched building, which reflects its material, which is a standing seam metal cladding. You can see there, for example, that if you're looking at the left-hand bottom image, its ridge height is broadly equivalent, slightly higher, but broadly equivalent to the eaves level of the house to the left. So if we just quickly skip back to that image, it's broadly the equivalent, obviously it's foreshortened by the position of the camera, but it's broadly equivalent to the height of the eaves overall of that dwelling on the left. And you can see there also on the bottom right-hand image, its scale relative to that of the existing building. I think that's it in terms of images. Yes, it is, Chair. And I seem to have lost the presentation altogether. Sorry, recovered. So in land use policy terms, Chair, the uses are either preferred or acceptable uses, subject to the usual impacts on things like highway safety, neighbour impacts, those kind of things. The extension itself, we feel that's of an appropriate scale and form. The materials are supported, they reflect the contemporary form of the building and provide an attractive contrast to the brick and stone of the traditional materials in the area. That building itself has no significant sort of neighbour impacts because of its scale, and there are no kind of openings that directly overlook adjacent properties, for example, or obscure views. There's good separation, relatively small scale, and that's supported, Chair. The terrace, which you can actually see there as a dark shaded element, that's been quite substantially reduced, but that did offer an opportunity to overlook the neighbours on the opposite side of Neil Road to some degree. So there'll be a screen there, an obscure glass screen that prevents that. One of the main issues raised in neighbour representations has been noise and disturbance to nearby residential properties. There was a noise survey undertaken, Chair. I think we detail that within the report. And a subsequent amendment or addendum to that following discussions with officers, including planning officers and those of environmental health. So that was amended after officer input. And in consideration of that, the hours that were being sought by the applicant were reduced. Initially wanted to open into the early hours of the morning, and that's now reduced, as you can see, within the conditions. Just to confirm what they are. That is condition nineteen, which limits the use to between eight o'clock and eleven thirty on any day. So the hours overall were reduced and curtailed, for want of a better expression, externally. So there was the area at the ground floor on to Ecclesall Road and the roof terrace. That is to cease at nine o'clock on any day. And that's commensurate with other premises along Ecclesall Road where those facilities occur, external terraces. So on that basis, Chair, we feel that that's now resolved any concerns that officers had about potential noise disturbance. It's within a flood zone, flood zone two. There's been a flood risk assessment undertaken. It's an existing building, so there's no question of kind of requiring buildings to be built to particular height. It's an existing building that's been adapted. And as is typical in such cases, a flood risk assessment's been undertaken that details a number of resilience measures and flood warning schemes, et cetera, which are incorporated in the conditions. In highway impact terms, there is no car parking within the site, as you can see. It is an activity that will obviously generate a lot of customers, but it's in a very sustainable location where we feel the opportunities are there for people to walk, use public transport and alternatively taxis and then potentially driving too. But we think that the impact of that, given the permit parking scheme in the area, will be very minimal. There is cycle parking provided, and there is a condition requiring that. All servicing is expected to take place from Ecclesall Road or Neil Road. It's quite common for that to take place on Ecclesall Road with other establishments. And this property being dual-fronted offers the opportunity to allow things such as refuse collection from Neil Road, for example, where the service yard, such as it is, exists. So overall, Chair, we feel it's a positive use for the building, and we're recommending approval.
Thanks, Chris. We have one speaker on this, Emma Hartland. If you'd like to come to the front, one of the desks, please, Emma. Emma is objecting to this thing. If you press the button on the right, you have five minutes.
Sorry, I'm a little bit nervous.
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. My name's Emma Hartland. I live at ninety-seven Neil Road with my partner and our one-year-old daughter. I'm A and E nurse, working at Northern General. We bought our house in April twenty twenty-two to be our family home. It's a three-bedroom terrace and is directly opposite the rear of the proposed development site. Ground and first-floor windows in my house look directly at the property, and the first-floor window is on high level of the proposed terrace space. Neil Road is a quiet housing residential area in the heart of Hunter's Bar, where many of the terrace houses are increasingly now occupied by families rather than students. We bought our house to bring up our families and environment in an area that's affordable and have quiet enjoyment. The proposed development is directly opposite my house, and narrow street divides us from it. The entrance to the proposed development is on busy Ecclesall Road, which is a commercial area, but the rear face is Neil Road, which is a housing area. There are no other commercial premises along the main length of Neil Road confirming its status as a housing area. We are not opposed to the site being developed. Planning permission has previously been granted for it to be converted into apartments and townhouses in keeping with Neil Road, but that planned has now been abandoned. My objection to the proposed plans is noise and disruption to the quiet housing area we live in. Anyone who walks past open drinking space in Ecclesall Road will know that these are often loud, especially in late afternoon and evenings. However, Neil Road is much quieter in comparison. That appears to be confirmed in the noise survey, where readings are twenty-five to thirty percent lower on Neil Road than on Ecclesall Road. In the revised plans, the open terrace area will now have a one-point-seven-meter-tall privacy screen, separating its southern extent from Neil Road, which is hard, which it won't restrict noise flow and sound reverberating off the walls of the Methodist Church, which is on the eastern side, which will bounce back to Neil Road. The noise survey included very unrealistic assumptions about small numbers of people talking for very short periods of time on the terrace. The reality is that in the summer it will be loud, and the noise will penetrate just when residents on Neil Road, for obvious reasons, will want to open their windows for ventilation. This is unreasonable and a nuisance. The opening hours of the terrace have been restricted to nine P M. With a young family and my shift patterns, sleep is important regardless of what time of the day it is. If the developer is really expecting the very small number of people to be using the terrace, as they've assumed in the noise study, then it wouldn't be a massive loss to the business to do away with it. The plans show other drinking areas to the front of the building, and if they were just to have this, it would be more in keeping with the rest of the things on Ecclesall Road. I'm also concerned about the barn extension proposed fronting on to Neil Road. This would be directly opposite my house with the noise flowing from that extension, especially when the roof windows are open for ventilation, which would be opposite my first four-bedroom window. This is new, has not been considered in any consultation with residents and could be significantly beyond the eleven-thirty P M closing time each night. We're also concerned where waste will be stored, and the new proposed confirms that the collection of waste will be from Neil Road, which is not in keeping with the nature of the street, only passable with one car at a time. How will restrictions of movement, storage and removal of waste materials after seven P M be enforced? And the emptying of large bins full of bottles into waste vehicles directly outside my house from seven A M in the morning, seven days a week, is unreasonable and a nuisance. It would be impossible to sleep through that noise. Waste should be managed on the commercial side of the property, not on the residential side. We also note that deliveries are permitted until eleven P M, seven days a week. If these are to be on the Neil Road side of the site, that is too unreasonable. Also, if food is to be distributed through things like Uber Eats delivery, then this should be serviced also from Ecclesall Road, not Neil Road, as it would be noisy and a significant pollution to our street, which is unreasonable. Overall, the proposals I've submitted do not take account fully into Neil Road housing area, and they constitute a nuisance to me and my neighbours as residents. Further consideration and consultation is vital to remove the negative consequences to residents who have a right to quiet enjoyment of their properties and protect the wellbeing of their families like mine. Sorry. Yes, thank you for listening. I ask the committee to take all of I said into consideration before making a decision on to this scheme, and especially to consider the removal of the terrace space as well as changes to the waste storage and collection proposals and the prevention of home delivery pickups polluting our road. I've brought a statement, if I can leave one. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Would you like to respond, Chris?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I think the main comments there were about noise disturbance primarily. So just focusing on those and repeating to an extent what I said earlier. There was a noise report undertaken, which in our normal way of working, we liaise with our environmental health officers, environmental protection officers, who advised us of some further work that was needed to that report. So the addendum was prepared. And yes, for example, some of the points that Emma's just referred to around the very small numbers, some of the assumptions that were made within that, were also echoed by our officers. And what that led, that was one of the contributing factors to the decision to reduce the amount of area covered by the terrace and also its hours. But we do now feel that it's a... The distance is quoted in the report. It's not an enormous distance, but it is, we feel now sufficiently detached from the houses themselves to avoid excessive disturbance. We're not saying that it will not be, it will be completely silent and it won't be heard. There will be noise that comes from it. That's inevitable, and it's not possible to kind of control that unless it is entirely removed. We don't feel it's justified to request complete entire removal because we feel that the hours restrictions and the relocation have resolved the most significant concern. With reference to the waste collection, I believe I'm right in saying, Chair, that, yes, the point's understood that a commercial bin collection would be in addition to the street at that point. Although it's my understanding that waste is collected from the Portobruck a little bit further down, so it's not entirely new thing for the street. We've restricted the hours, which is in line with with most consents that are issued around the city. And those hours are, it's very difficult. Whilst we appreciate that people have different sleep patterns, the hours are based on guidance that establishes those as daytime hours as opposed to nighttime hours. And that guides us very much, Chair, in deciding what the appropriate hours are. If we go beyond that, then we're almost saying that if we're trying to take account of all sleep patterns and shift working and what have you... all sleep patterns and shift working and what have you, then it's very difficult to pick a pick a time that is acceptable. So we go with the guidance which talks about daytime hours being from seven o'clock onwards. I think that that's that's pretty much covers the points that were raised, Chair. And anything else I can try and respond to in questions?
Thanks, Chris. Members' questions? I'll have Tony first.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Yeah, I went on the site visit yesterday, and I think it's it's something that needs to be done with that building, it needs bringing back into use. I understand, I'm reading, reading the supplementary report, I can see that they've reduced the delivery hours, which would impact on maybe the people on Neil Road. So that that's another good, good point. What I am, oh, and of course, the the outside drinking area at night, or whatever they want to call it, on the terrace, that is going to be restricted to nine o'clock, I believe. If I'm not mistaken, I'll get Chris to confirm that, which is not an unreasonable time, I wouldn't think, to 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 curtail that. The only, the only thing I would like to raise is, the question would be, is the lady mentioned, the the building at the back, what, I mean, it was very, we had a look at it yesterday, we had a look at the site yesterday, and I'm still not sure what's what that is, that building is going to be used for, the extension building on the bike, if you can just confirm that for me, please. Thank you, Chair.
Chris?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you, councillor Downing, that in responding to the question, I'd I'd forgotten that we've actually curtailed further the the delivery hours. So yes, it is eight o'clock rather than seven o'clock in the morning. So just to confirm, Monday to Saturday, the commercial deliveries and collections are eight o'clock in the morning to seven o'clock at night, and nine in the morning till two o'clock on Sundays and and public holidays. That's the amended condition number 20. I think the second question was, just to confirm, the hours of use of the terrace. And that is curtailed at ninepm. I'm just checking the the earlier time, I believe that's nine in the morning, yes it is. So it's it's condition 23, which is for the external seats areas of the front premises and the first floor terrace, limited to between nine and nine on any day of the week. In terms of the use of the the building to the rear, it's part, it should be regarded for the purposes of potential impact, et cetera, as the uses that are applied for within the within the consent. So just to go back to the description, it's food hall, street food restaurant, bar, small retail, business workspace, it's a flexible space, if it's a larger space, it will be able to be used for for different things. But the we're not, it's not being pinned down to be one specific use, if you like. The Class A that's been applied for could occur in any place within the building. We have limited certain uses within Class A, you'll see on condition 25, which limits certain uses within Class A. But in terms of the uses applied for, it could be any of those uses. It's described on the drone as a multifunctional space, so it could be a mixture of all the things that are that are applied for, Chair.
Will there be breakout noise from that area onto the back, onto the rear?
It's in, there is a condition preventing doors being opened between nine and and eight, sorry, nine at night and eight in the morning. And the other conditions within the permission, including the additional one referred to in the supplementary report, require sound attenuation measures to be imposed, and that can sometimes include, if necessary, things like lobbies and what have you, if that's deemed necessary when it comes to looking at the details. But there is a general sound attenuation condition that has to be based on a noise report that estimates the noise potential breakout and limit it to certain decibels in certain locations. So for example, the additional condition talks about part B of that, has to restrict noise breakout from the building to the street to levels not exceeding the prevailing ambient noise level by more than three decibels. And that's kind of barely perceptible, generally.
Mike?
Thank you, Chair. Picking up on on Emma's concerns, I'm looking at the the bottom left picture, which shows the rear of this proposed development, and I can see four windows. So other concern as to whether those windows can be opened. And I'm also going to ask if it could be secured by condition that that rear wall, which I gather it's it's got zinc material in it, I forget the exact phrase that's used, but can that be better soundproofed? So that's, because it's always difficult when a commercial development is, adjoins a residential area. So I can, I can understand probably not just Emma herself, but but other residents in the area would be would suffer from from noise coming from that, from that building. There's no, there's no frontage there, but I can understand that that sound could come through those walls and cause a disturbance to residents. Thank you.
Chris?
Okay, sort of taking those in reverse effectively. The the answer to that question is similar to the previous one, in fact, that the the sound attenuation scheme will take account of the construction of the building. So it will acknowledge the the fabric of the building, either the existing building or the or the new build element, and determine what's necessary to prevent noise breakout. So I'm satisfied that that will be, that will be secure, Chair, regardless of the material of the of the external face of the building. For the windows, I can't say for certain whether they're intended to be openable. If members were concerned that that was a potential noise breakout issue, and weren't happy to rely on the condition dealing with that that we have at the moment, then an additional condition could be imposed to ensure that they're they're non-openable or not open between certain hours, for example.
Thank you, Chris. I think I would, I would move that, that a recommendation on that condition to limit the opening of the windows. Yeah, to to cer- to certain hours, so that it's to enable people's quiet enjoyment. The other thing I didn't pick up on, about to lose it again, is it's slipping from me. Emma may make the point about reverberation of noise off the the church, the church wall down the alley, so that residents on Neil Road hear noise coming off of Echolsall Road. I just wonder what weight we can put on that. Thank you.
Chair, I think whilst I understand that's a potential concern, it's probably, I've gone the wrong way, probably worth noting the proxim, with the position of that terrace. Again, it's the the shared element with the sort of three almost square forms in it with the diagonal green lines. And you can see that that's adjacent to an area of the church where there's, there's quite a change in its form. It relates to an open space, it's not immediately adjacent to the channel, if you like, of the footway. So I think that that, if anything, the impact, the noise impact from that terrace would be more noticeable in the in the other direction, or the noise will travel more likely in the direction because of the the relationship between that building. I'm, I'm not a environmental health officer, Chair, I can't comment on that with any kind of certainty, but that would be my impression. And and in general, that again has been, all those factors, you know, what is, what is the potential impact of the of the terrace have been considered in 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 agreeing to to reduce the its size and also curtail its hours. And we felt that, taking all those things into account, those hours and a terrace of that scale is reasonable and wouldn't negatively impact on on the residents. Just to go, just to go back to the the question of the windows, if members wanted a suggestion on the on the hours that those windows should be fixed, I would say that would be similar to the, or the same as the external doors serving the ground floor, which is closed or not open between ninepm and eightpm in the morning, because that would be consistent with that that requirement.
Are you okay with that, Mike?
If other members are, I would move that, Chair. Can I second that, please? Is that, is that the point where we, I'd like to second Mike's proposal?
Chair, can I just clarify, is if members proposing a new condition regarding these four windows? Thank you. So it seems the motion's been proposed in a second, so we need to vote on on adding that condition. Thank you.
So Mike's proposal, buried, seconded. Can I see your hand show, please? Yep, much faster, thank you. Barbara next, please.
Thank you, Chair. In fact, most of my questions have been answered already, so I'll make a comment about the noise. I'm quite aware of a development, a commercial development, given planning permission, up and operating, and the residents at the back started complaining about the noise. It was sorted when the environmental health officer came and suggested some baffles and things. What I'm asking is sort of, can we advise the applicant to actually discuss the issues with the planning, environmental health? Because you say that you haven't got the facility within the planning department, but maybe they have there.
Just to be clear, Chair, the, in practice, whilst whilst I was merely just explaining that, I'm not an, I'm not a technical noise expert, that's why we deal with environmental protection, we do that all the time. So the, when, when we impose conditions which require noise information, then invariably those consultants will discuss the requirements of that with, unless it's clearly obvious to them, they'll discuss the requirements of that with our environmental protection team. And when that comes into us, we liaise with them, we consult them on the detail. If it's, it's not acceptable, it's either the application's either refused and they have to come back with a second attempt, or we will invite alteration. So the environment protection officers are very much involved in in that process.
Thanks, thank you. My point was that sort of, I know of places where permission has been granted and in hindsight, sort of the conditions weren't serious enough, or the discussions didn't take place, suitable discussions didn't take place before the commercial premises were in operation, which is why I was just wondering whether it could be strengthened, if you like. I mean, I accept sort of what you've said, because it sounds if it's up to the applicant to investigate further if they want to, rather than sort of just beyond planning. But the other thing was, there were quite a few comments about the the passageway down the side, and we saw that yesterday, we know it's being kept open, but also sort of antisocial behaviour. Now, and I asked yesterday, was it possible to actually have a comment about the lighting? Because it's, I mean, I've used that passageway many a time, when I felt it safe to do so. But I'm just thinking, if it could have motion-activated lighting, sort of as part of the conditions on there, it wouldn't intrude on sort of the residents unless it was in use, but maybe it would give that degree of security and reduce antisocial behaviour, which, you know, is a potential there.
Chris?
Chair, I'd anticipate that there would be a form, an element of lighting with a commercial use sort of alongside the building. But again, if members are, feel that's an appropriate requirement, I would have no objections to that being included as a as a further condition requiring details of of external lighting to the building, that would then take account of the illumination of the of the footway. We would have to be careful with the detail of that, Chair, to ensure it doesn't disturb residents, things like motion sensors can do. So, but some form of lighting, yes.
Thank you, Chair. I'm just conscious there that the planning officers just referred to some kind of lighting, which doesn't in itself sort of strike me as something that we'd normally put in a condition. It may be something that could be better put in a directive to, for the applicant to look at. Just in terms of a condition, members will be aware that there are six tests for the conditions, and obviously, one of them being needs to be precise, so the current time. I'm not sure whether we're in a position to put a condition in on that basis.
Thanks, Vicky. Can we have a directive, Chris?
We could include a directive, Chair. If it I don't want to disagree with with Vicky's suggestion. I think there are elements of the building which may involve external illumination that in 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 planning terms would be, in many ways, a reasonable consideration, in that we would want to ensure that lighting doesn't disturb neighbours, for example. And so my my intention would have been for the condition to require details of external, any external lighting of the building, including in relation to the adjacent, we can't call it a public footpath because it isn't, but the adjacent footpath link through the site. And I'm now looking at Vicky to see if she thinks that's acceptable.
Yeah, essentially, if we, if you want to talk about a condition where details are to be agreed with a local planning authority regarding external illumination, that that would need to be sufficiently precise. Thank you.
I have Burley next.
Thank you, Chair. I have two issues here. In light of increasing incidence of very, very hot weather as a result of climate change, I'm just wondering how realistic it is to think that we can, you know, we can, a building like this will can keep its windows closed when it is so hot. I mean, we sometimes, we're looking like, talking about experience of forty degrees some weeks of the year in the fairly near future. So are there any, is there any detail we can get to here about cooling of the building? I know there's, there's quite a lot of in the planning in planning law about sustainable energy, but I know cooling is also an issue. Is there, is there any way of ensuring that there is some cooling within the building without the need to open windows, which would create, create noise in the surrounding area? So that's my first question.
Chair, that relates to the sort of sustainable building design, construction issues that we issues that we touch on in page seventy. We're talking about the broader sustainability of the scheme in that section around its location, its reuse of an existing building, et cetera, and the the benefits of not demolishing the embodied carbon in the building, et cetera, which are all kind of big positives. What the applicant has committed, we do have a policy which requires a proportion of predicted energy to come from renewable sources. And the applicant, although they haven't detailed what that would be, has agreed to meeting that ambition. So that would be provided and that would go in hand in hand with consideration of cooling of the building, taking into account windows closed, et cetera, the other things that we've been referring to. There are also elements in building regulations that go, you know, not planning that deal with those kind of things. But I'm satisfied that they would be resolved through that, those measures, Chair.
Thank you. My other question is, should the noise condition, the way that noise travels, I know it's not an easy science to get your head around, but I know where I live, I can hear tram lines in Hillsborough and also stuff going on at Sheffield United Football Ground. I'm never sure where the noise is actually coming from. So I'm aware that in a situation like living on Neil Road, that can change as the weather changes and as the wind changes. I'm just wondering if there's any provision under planning law to enable neighbours who are, for example, on Neil Road, who feel that the noise is becoming intolerable, you know, particularly with a young child and also working irregular hours, if there's a sort of provision to help mitigate noise in those surrounding houses?
Chris?
In terms of, I think the simplest response to that, Chair, is that a planning application like this makes an assessment of the potential impact and imposes the conditions that it thinks are necessary. The developer complies with those and then there are no issues in planning terms. If there are subsequent noise concerns that go beyond that, then as with any other existing premises, that becomes a noise complaint, effectively a noise nuisance potential that would go to environmental protection. Our role as a saying this is to assess the potential impacts and come to a view on that and impose conditions or refuse permission accordingly. This is one where we've looked at the details. We've considered the noise information, the environment surrounding it, and in conjunction with environment protection have imposed a set of recommended conditions. We can't go much further than that really, provided that those are complied with. And anything else that goes beyond that would be a separate complaint through a different process.
Thank you very much.
Roger?
Thank you, Chair. One of the questions that was asked by Emma was about the deliveries. Now, under condition twenty, we've got the hours of delivery, but not where they should take place. And Neil Road is quite a difficult road because of the residents' parking and the fact that large lorries would find it difficult to turn around some of these adjoining roads. So is there any possibility that we can say that all deliveries have to be from the Ecclesall Road end? Thank you.
Roger, do you mean, you said deliveries, do you mean deliveries or do you mean refuse collection?
Chair, there's a few things there and I might have to ask Helen to make a contribution as well on that. So I can't speak for the applicant here, but the site layout, which plans best, that is probably as good as any. So the Neil Road frontage is at the bottom of the site. The left-hand set of gates lead to an area that is intended for refuse storage. So the practicalities of refuse storage being collected from Ecclesall Road, there's a challenge there and it lends itself and the site layout, existing layout, directs refuse collection towards Neil Road. Sorry, I should just say, yes, councillor Davidson's right, the conditions don't specify where deliveries should take place from more of the time. And that's in part because there are two entrances to the building. And we don't anticipate them being so regular that they would cause significant nuisance. And we feel that they can operate. Helen might want to make a comment on the highway side of things from either. I notice the applicant's agent's have got his hand in the air as well, Chair, but I don't know if Helen wants to make a comment on the on the highways aspects.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I think in terms of refus, we would have no issue with Neil Road because as I say, refuse vehicles go along there anyway. The only way in which you could start looking at restricting, you know, the servicing from a highways perspective would be to put on some form of traffic regulation order. And I don't think that would be appropriate in this instance. I think the majority of deliveries will be coming from Ecclesall Road, as you would envisage. And as I say, I think for refus from Neil Road, we wouldn't have an objection to that. Thanks, Chair.
Richard?
Thank you, Chair. If we could go to slide thirty-six, please, Chris. If I've got this right, please correct me if I haven't, the big rectangle with the X in it, that isn't mezzanine floor, that's just nothing.
That's a void, yeah.
If at some point there was a plan to fill that in, would it need planning permission?
I'd need to check, Chair, because the rules around mezzanines have changed such that I'm not sure of the answer off the top of my head. Generally, internal works don't require planning permission, but mezzanine floors were introduced and caused a number of issues in retail, large-scale retail formats, for example. And so the rules were changed. And I'm not sure whether it would apply to this kind of facility, potentially, but I can't honestly say.
But following that through, if you go to the back, still on slide thirty-six, at the back, there's a thing called a meeting room, sorry, I'm struggling to read it, at the back of the building, and I assume that is on the mezzanine floor level, is that right?
Yes, Chair, that's right.
Yeah, and then it's got a, I assume it's a double door to another room, which I can't describe because I can't read it. But my point is actually, there's then a window, which, if you look at slide thirty-three, that window overlooks the garden of the house on Neil Road. It's the next one, yeah. There is a window there, there's one on the back of the building and there's one to the left.
Yes.
Now, if that, if my assumption is correct, could we condition that that's not openable and is obscured glass?
I believe that, the room that councillor Williams is referring to, which is the I wish I could point with this, the the small room with the double doors in it, almost in the middle of the drawing, that's a store. Yes, again, if members felt it appropriate, that could be obscurely glazed.
I'll move that, Chair.
I'll second that.
Do I have a draw hands, please?
So obscure and unopening, or non-opening?
Yeah, thank you.
Laura?
It's already been dealt with, thank you, Chair. It was Barbara's point about the lighting of the footpath.
Chair, can I just take the opportunity there, just regarding that matter? Although that was discussed, I don't believe there was a proposal or a second of a vote regarding that conditional condition that we discussed.
I will move that proposal, Chair.
Can I have a second, Chair? So that proposal, that's aimed at for obscure and unopening window. Correct?
Chair, I believe that there's currently been two votes for two additional conditions. One being for those four windows at the rear of the property not to be open during the same time to the doors. The one that we've just put through is regarding that one window to that store not being openable and being obscured. And the discussion that we've already had was regarding the external lighting to the building and whether details of, we discussed a potential condition saying that details of external illumination to be supplied to the planning authority to be agreed. But despite having that discussion, it wasn't then voted on, thank you.
That proposal that Vicky has just raised, Barbara is seconding and unproposing. That's secured by condition, thank you.
Come show out with flies. Yeah, that's passed, thank you. All right, Vicky.
Yeah, just if the planning officer has confirmed, he's also got three new conditions, thank you.
Bernard?
Thank you, Chair. Having been a councillor in this, covering the city centre, I know full well the implications of having lots of premises around you that are open until early in the morning. And one of the issues that they find keeping people awake or waking up once they've got to sleep is the emptying of empty bottles and cans and things into bins, you know, after closing time, as it were. Is there any condition we can put on that?
Chair, there is one, which is bear with me, condition number twenty-one, which prevents it taking place after seven o'clock at night and before nine o'clock in the morning.
I'm very reassured, thank you very much.
Gary?
No, thanks, Chair, it's been, Richard's done it for me, thanks.
Do we have any members' comments? Peter?
Yeah, Chair, we've gone in the building, it's clearly important that we retain the character of the street scene in Ecclesall. So it's important to keep the building. And it's been used as a museum for over twenty years by the university and stood empty for over twelve years now, being gradually falling to disrepair and attracting antisocial behaviour. So it's important, we have got to find a use for this fairly quickly. And looking at the letters of representation, one says, "The food hall is a unique and exciting prospect. It would bring people to locality and would boost the local businesses, will add vitality to the shopping areas. The regeneration is long overdue." The objections, on contrary, say, "There are too many food and drink outlets in the locality already and unacceptable noise levels." Obviously, you've got to strike a balance here. And I just think the officer's proposal and their recommendations, I don't see any planning reasons for refusing this application now, Chair. I think they've bent over backwards to fulfil what's required. It could save that building, which is important, and add another attraction to that area. So I'm going to support the officer's recommendation, Chair.
Thank you, Peter. Mike?
Chair, I'm going to second the officer's recommendation. I do think it was important, the discussions that we've had just now, to make this development as acceptable to residents living nearby. Because the residents living in that area do deserve quiet enjoyment at reasonable times. But as Peter's rightly said, this building has lain derelict, you know, since, is it 2011, 2012? That's far too long. And I do think overall this is an acceptable proposal. But I'm really grateful to members' contributions in trying to get to a point where this will be as acceptable as we can make it. And I welcome it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mike. Bernard?
Yes, I support this recommendation with the amendments that we've made. I think it's been a very important conversation that we've had, taken account of Emma's concerns, which I think were very reasonable. I'm also very buoyed at by the planning service that says that the area is assumed that people arrive there by public transport, walking, other than having to use a car. So I'm very pleased that that's been, that's made a case, that this is a sustainable location. And I'm very pleased that that's there. It's important for everybody.
No one else? Right, we'll move to the vote. The vote is to approve this application with additional conditions imposed by the committer. So I'll move to the vote, Bernard?
For the recommendation.
Peter? Support the recommendation, Chair.
Tony?
The recommendation with the amendments.
Laura?
Support with the amended conditions.
Gary?
Yes, support, Chair.
Mike?
For the recommendation.
And it is?
Support the recommendation.
Roger?
Yes, I support the recommendation with the addition, thank you.
Barbara?
Support the recommendation, Chair.
Richard?
Yes, support the recommendation, Chair.
Thank you, that is passed with the additional conditions. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number nine, record of planning appeal submission and decisions. Do we have anything, Chris?
They're for noting, Chair, and none of them raise any issues. I think particularly important to bring to members' attention, but I'm happy to answer questions if there are any.
No, I take that as noted. Yep, thank you. Meeting time next meeting is on Tuesday, the 12th of September, 2023, 2pm. Thank you all, thank you very much.